Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock and I'd like to welcome those that are here at the September 17th meeting of the Gastonia City Council. And I'd also like to say hello to all those that are watching us on Channel 16 on Heim Warner. We're all trying to get settled and situated here, so we're glad you're here. We'll try to move along tonight, got a pretty heavy agenda. And I'd like to, at this time, under item A, is ask Councilman Kimball to give us a prayer, please, after which we will stand the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Councilman?
Thank you, Your Honor. Dear Lord, we ask your blessing on this meeting. We ask your blessing on this legislative body and all those that are present. We also, Lord, come to you this evening with heavy hearts on several fronts. Number one, to do what we can, in your grace, to help those that are feeling the full effects of the Colorado flood, to allow the rescuers to do their jobs, and also the folks from Samaritan's Purse to do your work out in Colorado. We ask your blessing, unfortunately, once again, on the victims of a shooting incident, this time in Washington, that they somehow be able to heal their wounds and also their loss for their loved ones. And lastly, Lord, we thank you for delivering our brave police officer from not being severely injured in the incident last couple of days from Gastonia. In Jesus' name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like, under item C, the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Send me.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
All right, discussion, all in favor? Okay, item D is the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of August the 20th. Is there a motion?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second? Discussion, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, we have, I'll alter, if you'll find, the addendum under item E, under awards, ceremonies, and promotions. The presentation is by Councilman Pierceall, if you want to go down.
Yes, Mayor.
You've got one, if you want to go down with.
I'm going to walk down to the podium for these presentations. Tammy. Mayor and Council, tonight, we have several plaques to give out for outstanding service to the city on different committees. And the first plaque I have, and I'd like to call him forward, is for Mr. David Williams. Now I'm going to read this plaque. It's to David Williams, in appreciation for your service to the city of Gastonia as a Board of Adjustment member from 2001 to 2013.
For your service.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, our next award is for Jacob G. Tripp-Hord III. Tripp, come on up here.
I've been telling you for a long time.
We have to be official.
Jacob Ladder.
And on this plaque, it says, "To Jacob G. Tripp-Hord III, in appreciation for your service to the city of Gastonia as a Board of Adjustment member from 2010 to 2013." Thank you very much. Thanks, Tripp.
Thank you.
Thanks for your hard work. Yes, there's one more.
Tripp?
Tripp, you can go back over there.
You can come back just for a moment. Our third plaque is to a gentleman named Jacob G. Tripp-Hord III, and this is for his appreciation for your service to the city of Gastonia as a Gastonia Planning Commissioner from 2012 to 2013. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and I also have a proclamation, and this is for Mr. Eric Davis. All right, Mr. Davis, I'm just going to read the proclamation from the city of Gastonia, and the proclamation is for the National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And the proclamation states, "Whereas National Disability Employment Awareness Month is a national initiative that raises awareness about disability employment issues and celebrates the many and varied contributions of individuals with disabilities, and whereas workplaces welcoming the talent of all people, including those with disabilities, are a critical part of the effort to build an inclusive community and strong economy. And whereas, in this spirit, the city of Gastonia recognizes the month of October 2013 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month." And now, therefore, the mayor has signed the proclamation below. Present you with this proclamation from the city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Gallagher. I'm here to give a proclamation to Dr. M.O. Owens. Doctor, if you don't mind coming forward. Thank you for coming tonight, sir. Appreciate it a whole bunch. Just let me read this, and you have many accomplishments. Whereas, Dr. M.O. Owens was born in New Holland, South Carolina, in 1913. After graduating from Taylor's High School, he attended Furman University from 1929 to 1933, where he graduated cum laude in 1936. Did you also run track there?
Yes.
Okay, just checking.
Mile and a half mile.
In 1936, he went on to Louisville, Kentucky, to attend the Southern Baptist Theological Seminary, where he graduated with a master's in theology degree. Whereas, after graduation from Southern Baptist Theological Seminary in 1939, Dr. Owens became the pastor of First Baptist Church in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, nice easy duty, and later served churches in Florida and North Carolina. And then, whereas, in 1960, Dr. Owens moved to Gastonia to become pastor of the East Baptist Church, and under his leadership, the church started Parkwood Baptist Church. That's my church. I've been there 20 years. He far outpaces me on that. As a mission church. And in 1963, Parkwood Baptist Church, how it got started, I believe there was like 10 men that anted up about $1,000.
Twenty.
Twenty men anted up $1,000 apiece. That's back in 1963. If you relate it to dollars today, it'd be about $10,000 per person. It's amazing. Parkwood Baptist Church called Dr. M.O. Owens to serve as pastor as he served until 1980. And in the mid-1970s, Dr. Owens received his doctorate degree from Ogarthorpe University in Atlanta, Georgia. Beyond his retirement in 1980, Dr. Owens served one year as a missionary in Belgium, and in 1983, Dr. Owens went on a mission trip to Chile, and since then has continued to serve Parkwood Baptist Church as our pastor emeritus, preaching there weekly in a ministry spanning now 50-plus years. Plus, he also writes a booklet that he sends out to the church on a monthly basis. Is that correct? Throughout his ministry, Dr. Owens has served on numerous boards, including the Southern Baptist Sunday School Board, the trustees of the Home Mission Board, trustees chairman and the trustees for Gardner Web College. Among his many accomplishments, Dr. Owens founded Gaston Christian School, which is still in existence today, and shared an established crisis pregnancy center of Gaston County, which has saved numerous children's lives. And he is author of a book called "God, Do You Hear Me?", and he also co-authored a book, "John, the Word May Flesh." And, Doctor, are you also working on another book now?
The Holy Spirit, yes.
The Book of the Holy Spirit. The man is definitely working. Whereas, in 2011, Dr. Owens received a Heritage Award from Baptist State Convention of North Carolina and North Carolina Baptist Foundation of his exemplary service, philanthropy, and leadership in missions and ministry within the Baptist State Convention of North Carolina. Over the years, and at Southeastern Theological Seminary in Wake Forest, an academic post was named in his honor last year, the Dr. M.O. Owens Junior Chair of New Testament Studies. It's quite an honor. Whereas, Dr. Owens has three daughters, one foster daughter, eight grandchildren, this multiplication's amazing, two foster grandchildren, 12 great-grandchildren, and one foster great-grandchild. Now, therefore, I, Mayor John Bridgeman of the city of Gastonia, congratulate Dr. M.O. Owens on his accomplishments and service to his community, and wish him a very happy birthday, happy 100th birthday. And witness herof, I set my hand to and caused the seal of the city of Gastonia to be affixed this fifth day of September in the year of our Lord, 2013. And, Dr. M.O. Owens, thank you for all your service and all you've done for the city. Appreciate the whole group, sir. Would you like to say some words?
I would like to say if one thing, and that is to be a Christian, to be a child of God, to have the knowledge of saving grace of Jesus Christ is the greatest joy in the world. People who don't know Christ miss it out, miss all the real good things in life. To be a child of God, to serve Christ Jesus, is the greatest privilege that anybody can have. I've lived 100 years, and in those 100 years, I've never had a really bad time. God has been so good to me. I've had many, many privileges, all kinds, but all the way through, I've enjoyed what I do. I love to preach, preach twice every Sunday, and I still love people. That's a mark of the Parkwood Church particularly, that it's a church where people love each other, and I got it started off in the right way, and it continues to be that kind of a church. And God is so good to me, that if you do not know Jesus Christ as your Savior, you're missing out on all the really good things in the world. Thank you.
Dr. Owens just finished playing golf today, too. I think he shot under his age.
Pleasure. Pleasure.
Oh, he is.
Thank you for your service, sir. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the two proclamations that were presented.
All in favor, please? Okay, thank you. And thank you, sir, for being here. Under item F is a presentation of Patricia Erickson, 27 Forever Foundation, references request for in-kind services, Hope, Health, and Harmony Festival, October 12, 2013.
Good evening, and thank you very much for allowing us the privilege to speak to you this evening. My name is Patricia Erickson.
I'm Gail Antler.
We're standing here before you this evening to ask the city of Gastonia for support for our 27 Forever Foundation's Hope, Health, and Harmony Festival at the park, October 12th. We are requesting the use of Sims Park, and in addition, we are requesting the following in-kind services: police, fire, emergency, medical personnel, electrical hookups, and
27 Forever Foundation was founded last year when Pat's son, Andrew Erickson, and my son, Blake Robinson, both died at the age of 27. Pat and I, distraught with grief, made a commitment to each other to do all we can do to save lives of others suffering from the same illnesses of our boys, diabetes and liver failure. Our goal is to educate Gaston County and hopefully beyond about the need for cure diabetes and educating people of the importance of organ donation.
Hope, Health, and Harmony Festival at the park will provide an opportunity to vote to do both. By partnering with Caramont Regional Medical Center and their diabetes healthcare team, they will help provide information to our community about diabetes prevention. Diabetes is a disease that causes many human organs to fail, causing heart attacks, kidney failure, amputation, blindness, and death, my son being one of diabetes' many victims. Statistics show more and more children who are obese are diagnosed every day due to the lack of proper nutrition and exercise.
Second, to provide the necessary information to all adults 18 years and older about how to become an organ donor. Organ donation is imperative to saving lives. Over 3,500 people in North Carolina alone are waiting for organ transplants. Sadly, there are more organs needed than are available, and many die like my son waiting on an organ.
Our partnership with Caramont Regional Medical Center and their diabetes wellness team will provide free diabetes and blood pressure screenings and literature about becoming an organ donor. Caramont's wellness team will provide answers to healthcare questions, including the pros and cons of different medications for diabetes. We are welcoming our local fitness businesses such as the YMCA, CrossFit, and Gold's Gym to provide fitness tips. The day will be filled with education, games, fun, food, and lots of fabulous music. That's a promise. A perfect outing for the whole family. Ideally, we hope to promote a healthier lifestyle, which in turn will save our community millions of dollars in the future. We need the city of Gastonia to help us teach wellness. A healthy community is a progressive community. On behalf of Gail and me, we thank you for your time, and we hope you support our festival. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Any other questions? Any? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ladies, I actually have a friend that is a recipient of an organ that has been donated. Real briefly, can you, many folks, I believe, as you probably do, don't understand how easy that is and what can be done to facilitate the donation of an organ when one passes. Could you very briefly just outline that?
Well, actually, you can be a living donor, I want to make that clear. One misconception I would like to make clear is that even if you are a cancer survivor having been through chemotherapy, you can still be a donor. Most of the time, sadly, someone has got to pass on in order to contribute their organs, but it's a very simple step. If you all would look at your driver's license this evening, if you have a red heart on your license, that means you're already registered to become an organ donor. If you're not, that is part of what Hope, Health, and Harmony is about, and in education is the best way to make more organs available.
Thank you.
And it doesn't matter how old you are.
That's right.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, Ms. Gregg?
Motion to approve the in-kind services.
Second.
Second. Discussion, any other questions? All in favor, please? Thank you very much. It is, thank you very much. The next presentation, under item F, is Mr. Tim Gaulz, Duke Energy, the reference is River Bend Plant Decommission, Mountain Island Lake. Clemson's doing well tonight, it looks like here.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks for this opportunity to come and share some information with you about some of the activities that Duke is undertaking at the River Bend steam It's good for you to understand what some of the issues are around the plant, since the city of Gastonia is, I guess, the largest water purveyor in the community, and our River Bend plant sits right on the shores of Mountain Island Lake, which is the water supply for one of the water supplies for the region. As I said, River Bend is a steam station located in Gaston County, and we've opted to retire River Bend, as some of you know, effective April 1 of this year. It came down to an economic decision for the company after the plant had been in operation for over 80 years, and it has served its community well, providing a great tax base for Gaston County and a lot of jobs, and certainly an abundant supply of energy to the region, which has powered our manufacturing and business and homes, as I said, for over 80 years. But as the Environmental Protection Agency began to increase its requirements on air quality, Duke needed to make a decision, as I said, an economic decision, to either upgrade the plant or to look at decommissioning the plant. In the case of Plant Island, south on the Catawba River, we made the decision to add the additional infrastructure to that plant, to put scrubbing equipment on the plant, and it cost us upward of a billion dollars. And in the case of River Bend, we couldn't see that justification and made the decision to close it two years early on April 1. So what does that look like going forward? Well, it's a multi-year process. Basically, on April 1, the team of employees who operated the plant on a daily basis left that facility, and another team of individuals came in to start the decommissioning process. They go through the plant, they look at all of the infrastructure in the plant, do an assessment, with the idea that all of the equipment in the facility will be removed, that the structure will be demolished, and any materials or metals that are there will be recycled, if possible, and other metal will be disposed of. So it's a multi-multi-year process to go through it, just as it took years to build it, it takes years to disassemble it and do it in the proper way. This plant is one of seven plants around the state, seven of 14 coal plants that will be retired this year. And in its place, we have built newer, cleaner plants that are operated with natural gas. The price of natural gas, as you know, has fallen, and so our company and its integrated planning process decided to take advantage of it, and we've invested over $9 billion in new plant investment so that we can have more efficient and cleaner plant that emits about half of the carbon dioxide that we would have seen before. So there are those who would like to see us eliminate coal from the equation completely. If you think about the successes that the company has enjoyed with the lower rates over the years, it's because we've been able to manage a diverse fuel portfolio strategy using hydro and nuclear and coal and natural gas, wind and solar power. And so we want to continue to maintain that diversity, and because of that, we've been able, as some fuels have risen and fallen over the years, we've been able to take advantage of the cheaper fuels to provide energy to the community. Now, I wanted to tell you a little bit about the plant operation itself and the water quality. We have complied diligently to the water discharge permit that we have with the state. We've been monitoring water quality at Mountain Island since the 1950s. The data has been supplied to state agencies that are responsible for water quality, and the data continually demonstrates that the water quality is good, that the fish are healthy, and that our drinking water supplies are safe. So you'll hear some discussion about seepage or seeps, and that's, at our ash basins, at all of our ash basins, we've got seeps, and that's, it's part of the dam's structural integrity to have a seep. And a seep is just, it's a small outflow of, from that earthen structure, that again allows the dam to operate effectively. So the volume of seepage from our ash basin is extremely small, and it is not impacting the water quality in the lake. The data does not support claims of a grave water quality crisis on the Catawba River. The monitoring of the water at the Charlotte, city of Charlotte's drinking water intake, which is downstream from River Bend, consistently finds, and these words are sometimes scare people, or they're used to scare people, consistently finds arsenic, chromium, selenium, and other trace elements, again, these are trace elements, that are less than one part per billion. This is less than the lowest amount that lab instruments can measure and is well below surface water standards. I want to say that again. The amounts of these trace elements are less than one part per billion. The amounts of these trace elements are less than one part per billion, and they're lower than the lab instruments can measure, and it's well below the surface water standards that the state uses. Then you'll hear, you'll hear conversations about groundwater monitoring. We have, we have groundwater monitoring wells around our facilities, at every facility where there's a, an ash basin. At River Bend, we find elevated levels of iron and manganese only. These are common to North Carolina soils, and they pose no health risk to drinking water. Then you'll hear concerns about fish consumption advisories, you know, don't eat the fish. And so in this case, the fish consumption advisories on the lake are not related to the plant operations. There is a statewide mercury consumption advisory for certain sensitive groups of fish. But routine testing shows mercury in Mountain Island fish is low, and it's consistently well below the state fish consumption advisory level. The other scary word that you hear out there is PCB. It's been thrown around and in, in an attempt to create a correlation to River Bend or Plant Island. PCB comes from industrial uses decades ago, but there are no PCBs in coal. So where we are now is that, as some of you may have seen in the paper, in the news and the media, that the North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources filed a complaint back in May of this year alleging violations from ash basin seepage and groundwater monitoring data that shows levels above some groundwater standards. So Duke and Deener proposed a consent order on July 15 of this year and started taking public comment, the state started taking public comment since that time, and it ended on August 14 last month. This proposed consent order says that, basically says that what we're going to do is more rigorous testing at the sites, that we will monitor the ash basin discharges. And if the regulators choose to make any amendments to the discharge permits that are, that we currently have in place, then that will be a totally transparent and public process. So we will continue, even though the plant is closed, to monitor the facility, just as we always have to monitor the groundwater, to do the tests and the inspections that we always have done, even though the plant is not in operation. So what we can expect, and we got a little feedback last week from the, from the state, is that they want to pick up the pace of getting the data that needs to be submitted by Duke and expand the parameters for monitoring at any unpermitted discharges or seeps. So that's where we are. And I guess, again, I want to leave you with the message that, that we're going to do the right thing. Duke has always done the right thing. We, we live here, work here, we drink the water that you drink, and we're gonna, we've always abided by the rules and the regulations that the state has to offer, and we will continue to do that. So I hope that this overview has, will alleviate any concerns that anyone has about the process and about the quality of the water and the, and the responsibility that the city has to, as a purveyor, to provide water to the community. I'll stop there and see if there are any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Gauls? Mr. Gallagher, Ms. Gregg?
Tim, how many kilowatts, is that the right definition for that plant on daily basis? How many kilowatts was it doing? Do you know?
It was, it was, we measured it in megawatts, and it was, it was about a tenth the size of a, of one unit at a nuclear plant, to give you some perspective on it.
Now, you're going to be going to gas plants or so, you said?
Yes.
Are they going to be here in North Carol, North Carolina, close to this plant? Because with this plant closing down, what's going to make up those, those megawatts that we're losing? Or is, you know, because there is a supply and demand out there.
Yes, you're right. And ironically, even though the economy is, is, is down in terms of industrial consumption, what we're finding is that as individuals, we're all using more energy because of the, all of the electronics and things that we, that we enjoy in our homes and at work. The, we are, as I said, we are building additional capacity using natural gas units. We built, we retired a plant up in Rowan County in Salisbury, near Salisbury, and we built a natural gas combined cycle plant right next to the old plant that were retired. And my, you know, my hope would be that one day, because River Bend is such a strategic site, if you think about all of the infrastructure at that site, all of the transmission lines that converge on that facility, and if you think about that as a strategic distribution location, then my hope would be that one day it becomes strategically important for a new facility.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I just have one question. You mentioned multiple years of decommissioning.
Yes.
Do you have any kind of feel for what that multiple years are?
It's, it's a, it's a, multi could be three to five years.
Three to five years.
Yeah. And I would say closer, closer to three. But again, just as it took time to build it, we're very meticulously looking at the plant, and we are working with those regulators who are also monitoring what we do at the site, because we don't, you know, as a country and as a company, there's not a lot of decommissioning experience right now. You know, if you think about all these plants that are 50-plus years old and 80 years old, they are now reaching that time in their, in their cycle to, where you need to retire them. And so across the country, this is going to be a process that many electric utilities use, and we want to use this as an opportunity to learn.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
In essence, you know, it's very similar, I think, to what the armed forces may use. You're almost, as I understand it, you're going to be deconstructing that plant.
That's correct.
And that's going to, that's going to take place in multiple stages with checks and balances within those stages to ensure it's being done properly and also with the greatest degree of safety to the public.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Tim, is Duke Power building something recently down South Carolina area where they need a whole bunch of welders and?
Well, we.
I know it's not on this subject, on River Bend, but I was just.
Well, where we're, where we're headed now, in, we have a plant site that we are very excited about down in Cherokee County, just right across the state line, where we would build a nuclear plant. With the, with the state of the economy and the, the reduction in demand and the, the use of renewables and, and energy efficiency, energy efficiency programs, that plant, right now, the growth rate does not call for us to build that plant as quickly as we had earlier thought. The site is, you know, is selected, the, the early licensing work has, has been underway now for a couple of years. It takes about 10 years to build a nuclear plant, and it takes several years to get to the point where you can start the construction. So we, we have sort of pushed that one out, but we're looking at partnering with other utilities who, to build a nuclear plant in the lower part of South Carolina. The cost of nuclear is, is, the construction is so expensive that it puts any company individually at risk to bear the cost of that capital on its own. So partnering is probably something you're going to see more and more of in the future. And, and welders are, are in demand at all of our plant sites where we're, you know, where we're building these gas plants. That, that's going to be, that's something that we want to emphasize. We, over in Kings Mountain, we built a training facility so that when welders come out of school, whether it's high school or Gaston College, they go to our facility, and we train them again to make sure that the things that they build that are covered up inside a plant are, you know, perfect welds and certified.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Tim, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your presentation. Folks, no one signed up for the public expression under item G. Let me take just a moment here. No, this is not under public expression. Here's, here's a blank sheet right here, if you want to look at it, Jan. Did you want, you signed up? Are you waving?
I signed up on the wrong sheet.
Okay, that's what I was looking at. Okay, the, I do want to take a moment, if, before we get into the regular agenda, I have naturally eagled out and spotted a boy scout right there that I'd like to recognize, and maybe he and his dad, if you'd like to come up and just embarrass yourself, tell you, tell us, let us look at you. Seriously, tell us your name and where you're in school and what you're working on. We're glad you're here.
Thank you for having us. My name's Trevor Stevens from Trip 6, and right now I'm working on the citizenship and the community merit badge. I need to come to a city council meeting and take notes. This is my dad, Glenn Stevens.
Good to see you. Sort of thought it might be. Well, it's certainly good to have you here with us and keep taking those notes, most of them.
Thank you, sir.
We're glad, glad you're here, and you've accomplished that goal tonight. Come back anytime.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving to the regular, regular agenda now, Jan. This is the, the item one is a public hearing amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. Subject hearing involves considering an ordinance amending section 8.2.16 of the Unified Development Ordinance to amend the maximum square footage and the method of computation for square footage calculations relative to private clubs in the Central Business District. Gastonia Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve the ordinance amendment. This public hearing is continued from the August 20, 2013, and the September 3, 2013 city council meetings and the presentation by Mr. Jason Thompson, City Planning Manager. I just do now move the public hearing to be open, Jason. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item, as, as you mentioned, has been before council a couple of different times, most recently at the September 3 meeting. At that meeting, there were some concerns voiced by council with regard to two primary items. One was some conversation, some concerns that had been expressed by the city's alcohol law enforcement officer relative to this proposed ordinance, as well as a broader concern or hesitancy with regard to any adjustment upward in the current square footage threshold that is in the Unified Development Ordinance for private clubs in the Central Business District. With that being said, the, I would call your attention to exhibit 1-1 in your agenda. Staff, in bringing this back before council, has provided, hopefully will be some help with this discussion to address any confusion, has provided a series of bulleted points to either clarify some previous discussions and to provide some options to council. And so I would like to run through those items and taking any questions as we go along there. First, just again, this is one of the clarifying points. The current Unified Development Ordinance standards for private clubs in the, in the Central Business District, excuse me, they do not prohibit a private club larger than 2,000 square feet from locating in the Central Business District. Instead, what they say is that if a private club larger than 2,000 square feet seeks to locate in this downtown zoning district, the Central Business District, that, that private club must have a menu of prepared food available, and that the food must be served on reusable ware, which is in essence a requirement for a commercial dishwasher in order to be able to provide that. Secondly, as I've mentioned in, in previous hearings, this amendment proposal is, at least in part, the, the result of a request from a prospective private club operator that wants to open a private club in the Central Business District. But, but that individual, that, that group has some concerns about the way the current ordinance is written. And so part of what you've seen before you and the proposals for changing the ordinance have been with an eye towards that, that individual's request. One additional item for your consideration tonight that is provided in your agenda is a little different approach to trying to address this individual's concern. In other words, if council seeks to make an adjustment to the ordinance in order to allow this private club, then one way to do that would be to address what I previously mentioned as one of the requirements for reusable ware. In other words, one approach could be to remove that requirement for, for a private club to have reusable ware. It would still maintain the requirement for a prepared menu of food. And as I mentioned, staff has included that ordinance language for your consideration tonight. The third bullet point here is dealing with some discussion that really seems has been in place since the September 3 meeting. And that is some discussion with regard to a possible ceiling or a cap on the maximum square footage for a private club in the Central Business District. As I mentioned earlier, that cap, that hard ceiling, does not currently exist. So if, if city council did wish to enact such a restriction, staff is requesting respectfully that you provide some direction in that regard, and we would be happy to bring that back before you at a, at a later council meeting. And then lastly, as I mentioned earlier, the, in response to some of the discussion at the most recent meeting, staff has requested that the city's alcohol law enforcement officer be present tonight in order to, you know, express any of those concerns he may have and also to answer any questions. And with that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have or to review any of the previous discussion that we've had on this item.
Any questions, Mr. Thompson? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. Jason, I don't know whether this would be the, actually, two parts here. There was a specific applicant, I believe, with regard to this and to us to take a look at this. Is there anyone here?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Because I know that that was something that, okay, Your Honor, I wasn't sure that was something that we didn't, weren't aware of last time. Secondly, with regard to the ALE officer, are we going to have a chance, are you going to come up later on and just speak to your concerns, or would you like to do that now? to come up later on and just speak to your concerns or would you like to do that now? Thank you, folks. Just real quickly, where do your concerns lie with this?
The question that was posed to me initially was what did I think about the increased sizes of a private club in the downtown?
Excuse me. I'm sorry.
Name and address, please.
I'm sorry, my name is Officer Worster and I work with the City of Gastonia Police Department.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I was asked about what did I think about the increased sizes in the central business district of the private club? My initial concern was essentially as the increase of size of a private club, as does the violence, as does the overall problems, not saying anything against this possible permittee, but just in the City of Gastonia, as it stands, the smaller private clubs that we have right now are virtually non-existent on the calls for service. As the increase sizes, as do the violence and the problems that are happening on that actual property.
So it really, it wasn't anything to do with the food service, though?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, no, I don't have any of the officers.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Officer Worster, other cities, when they have an increase of square footage for private clubs, does the drinking and the out of hand and calls for the police department to step in multiply?
If I can, I'll answer on that. Captain Edward Turris, Gastonia City Police. I don't anticipate that there'd be any service demands that would be different than any other location that either has greater or lesser population. If it's managed well, then usually there's not problems. I don't think that there's probably any national standard that we can just directly turn to because it's very geographically varied. Certain cities might have problems because they're not managed well. And you might have other cities that have larger operations that are managed quite well and have very few problems. So it'd be very difficult to specify in general, bigger places have bigger problems type of things. We usually try to say that if it's managed well and our service demands are taken care of, they hire off-duty officers, if they operate as a restaurant or a business nearby, those types of things usually address any issues. So, you know, a lot of it can be addressed through management, through the people that operate and own the location. And we don't anticipate that there'd be service demands that would be any different than you expanding some other ordinance or location for a specific reason.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you both very much. On the silent sheet is Mr. Daniel Balkum, the first one on here. You can come give us your name and address, please.
My name is Daniel Balkum, 8001 North Ryan, Charlotte, North Carolina. I've been working on this project for about, maybe just October, it'd be two years, that I've met with Drew and his team. I purchased the building a few years ago and it's just been sitting there empty and I was wanting to do something with it. So I met with Drew to kind of see, to make sure the zoning was correct and everything. And what I wanted to do was is put basically a beer yard room, pool hall, have pool tables and stuff. And while meeting with Drew and his team, he informed me that, because I was wanting to go up with a private club, and the reason why is because with the restaurant, you have to do 30% food sales for the North Carolina state. And I don't like really, I mean, I don't mind serving food, but it's just, it's kind of hard to meet those requirements because I've got two pool halls now, one in Almar and one in Hickory. And one of them's a restaurant that I have to meet the quota and just sometimes I don't meet it. So when I'm meeting with Drew, he informed me that anything over 2,000 square feet, you would have to serve food. It's not a problem, I could do that. The type of food I always wanted to serve is bar food, you know, just wings, burgers, fries, you know, nothing crazy. I didn't want, you know, no steaks or chicken, just bar food. When people shoot pool and have them drink, if they want some wings and fries, that's it. Got with my RTech, he drew the plans up and, you know, it took a little long time, so I had to go and get another RTech. So when another RTech submitted the plans, that's when the glassware came up, that we had to put in a dishwasher. And coming from the RTech, putting a dishwasher in was an extra, you know, averaging 15,000 to 20,000 dollar cost because, one, the, I have an inch water line coming in and that I would upgrade it to an inch and a half, so I had to do a water tap and bust up that concrete and asphalt. And of course, I had a dishwasher. So that's the reason I came to y'all about, I guess, six months ago and see about maybe changing the ordinance or whatever to, just so I can serve baskets. I don't know how the square footage kind of got out of hand on this because I was here at the last meeting. I think right now my building is 4,500 square feet. I'm not really going to do a club type deal. I'm not like a dance club, it's just a pool hall, just for people to come shoot pool and just have bar food. That's all.
Questions of the both? Yes, sir.
Have you had a chance to read the new proposed ordinance?
No, sir.
Jason, help me out here if I'm incorrect. It looks like in the new ordinance, the change has been to item C where it eliminates the equipment for the cleaning of reusable serving ware for food and beverage. Is that the only change to the ordinance as we see it in exhibit 1-6?
That's correct, those items on the last two lines of C.
Okay, and Mr. Balkum, would this allow you to do what you want to do by eliminating the need for the cleaning of reusable server ware and food, for food and beverage?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that one line is what we're talking about. Is that correct, Jason? That's basically what we're dealing with now?
Yes, sir.
All that other discussion we had previously is put to the side and we're just dealing with basically a dishwasher.
Well, this is offered as one other option that is available to council with regard to the way this item has been advertised for this hearing. So, you know, all of the other previous discussion is still a possibility as well in terms of, you know, how you may or may not want to approach an amendment. So it could be a portion of what you previously discussed that if you wanted to approve, it could be all of it. It could be just this last line you just referenced with regard to a dishwasher, or it could be just turning away the entire idea for an ordinance amendment altogether and staff, if council desired, could come back with some different ordinance amendment or no amendment at all. So really, there are a variety of options that are available to you here tonight.
But if this ordinance, as it's written in exhibit 1-6, will satisfy Mr. Balkum's needs to, for him to open his business, I will go ahead and make the motion that we approve exhibit 1-6 as written.
I will second.
Okay, under discussion, first of all, we had, Ms. Craig had raised her hand and then I have another person to speak on the silent sheet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you didn't. Now, go ahead.
Just so that I, before I make a decision, let me clarify what I think I'm hearing you say.
Sure.
Okay, that the private club will stay at 2,000 square feet according to this ordinance.
For the threshold for requiring a menu of prepared food.
Right.
Yes.
2,000 square feet.
Yes.
And they would not have to use the reusable ware with the new ordinance.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's what the new ordinance is, those two things?
That's correct.
Okay. Tell me why in this ordinance, in some places it says private club, in other places it says lounges. Are they two, I mean, are they the same? Are those interchangeable language?
Some of that language that you see that says lounge is leftover from the previous zoning code that the city had prior to the adoption of the Unified Development Ordinance back in 2009. The previous ordinance used that language lounge synonymously with the state requirement for a private club. What we attempted to do when we brought forth the UDO was to clean up all that language. Clearly, we didn't get it all cleaned up. But what it means in there is private club. Private club and lounge are equal, they're the same thing.
Okay, so when the ordinance gets finalized, all the language will be correct?
We could certainly clean that up, yes.
Right, okay, all right. That's the only thing I needed to find.
Okay. Let me call, Mr. Jan Dean, up to the, come to the microphone, please, the signed up public hearing.
Signed up on the wrong thing. I didn't mean to sign that.
Oh, okay.
I was trying to say earlier. Sorry about that.
Okay, did you sign up to just be on the public, just for public expression?
Yes.
We'll come back to that. My call here, I see. Okay, any other questions at all? Now, your motion is made and seconded.
Yes, sir.
Yes?
I make a motion that we close the public hearing first before we vote.
Okay, all right. Second for that?
Second here.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, now, all in favor, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I had a question regarding to the, this one? No.
Pardon me, it's on, but it's on the table.
I left the room.
Put it on the foot.
Okay, so with regard to the actual wording of this ordinance, should that not be completely clear before it's voted upon?
You're talking about lounges and private clubs?
Yes, sir. Can we just make those minor changes right now?
Yes, sir. If you want to entertain a motion to amend, to change the references from lounge to private clubs, staff can certainly make those changes before we send the ordinance in to the municipal code corporation to be bound and looked.
I mean, that would be totally, you know, clear at that point.
Yes, sir.
If we do that.
Yes, sir.
So would you have a problem with that, Ms. Craig, if I made that amendment to your motion?
I would welcome that amendment.
Okay, since we had.
He made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would have no problem with that.
Okay. Well, I'd like to make that amendment so that we have this perfectly clear, okay?
I will second that.
Wonderful, okay.
All in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Jan, come on up and let's go back to yours, please, Jan Dean. I should have listened to you a little more. I thought maybe you were going to speak on this issue.
I apologize. My name is Jan Deans. I reside at 1003 Caber Court in Indian Trail 28079. I'm the executive director of Family Service, Inc., located here in downtown Gastonia. And what I wanted to do was make a public thank you to Brenda Craig and Jim Gallagher for their support in our recent fundraiser at the Gastonia Convention Center, which we had a great time with. It was called the Little Black Dress Party, which we're actually going to change that to Little Black Dress and Tie Party next year. But I just want to thank the council, for those of you that were at least verbally and those who actually came for the support that we had as we tried to get ready to celebrate our 50th anniversary next year. And I greatly appreciate Jim Gallagher going the extra mile by sending out an email to the council, the county commissioners and others, taking a risk on not only his reputation but taking a risk on myself and the leadership at Family Service. And I just wanted to say thank you again for that. You guys get enough criticism as it is and so when the opportunity arises where you need to be committed, I want to do that in a public format. So I want to thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, by the way, we had about 100 people, if you count the band and a few roaches that hung out.
Okay. All righty, item two is public hearing, Economic Development Agreement for Project H. Presentation by Ms. Christie, Crisp Business Services Manager. Christie.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Over the past six months, city staff has worked with Gaston County Economic Development Commission in recruitment of Project H to our Gastonia Technology Park. Project H is a materials manufacturing industry that is interested in over $120 million investment in the Gastonia Technology Park and has proposed over 100 jobs. You will see on your sheet a list of the proposed incentives that we have included. And as a standard with our industrial recruitment, we have proposed to mirror Gaston County's tax investment grant. That is the level four grant based on their investment. There's a typo on your sheet. It is not the level one, it's the level four. We have also proposed waivers of their water and sewer system expansion fee, as has been standard in the Gastonia Technology Park. Their electrical load qualifies them for our electric economic development rider. We have also proposed our electric economic development grant for $100,000, as has been offered in other instances as well. At their meeting this past Thursday, Gaston County Commissioners unanimously approved their incentive package and a draft of the EDA has been made available for you at your seat. City staff has been working with county consultants, the company, throughout the day-to-day, actually finalizing some of the precise wording in it. But you will find a substantially close to final draft available for you. City staff recommend approval of this economic development agreement with minor wording changes to still be finalized with the attorneys.
Okay, I will declare it open, this public hearing. Any questions of Christie? Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any idea when they might be making their final decision, Project H?
I do not know, but I will be happy to ask Mr. Donnie Hicks, who is here, to come to the podium.
That would be nice.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Well, it could have been Gary, maybe.
Could have been worse.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Craig. We don't have a hard date from them on the, when they're going to make this decision. The original geography that they searched was from Louisiana to Maryland, so they started out with a huge number of sites. And while they haven't disclosed how many are left, we know we're down to a couple finalists, maybe as few as two. And I would anticipate that they're going to make that decision fairly soon. But we don't have an exact date when they're going to do it.
That's fine.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Gallagher?
The economic development tax incentive grant, number four, what is that? Is there a dollar amount on that?
What happens is the company is required to pay their taxes in full. And once those taxes are paid in full, then we return a portion of that tax back to them over a specified period of time. We do a couple of things. One, we, that subjects them to greater scrutiny from the county taxing office. We typically will go out and make sure that everything that they say is there, is there. So we'll go and make sure there's no discovery that there was something that was not listed that should be there because it does happen occasionally. And so they get a portion of that tax returned to them. The interesting part of that is we have a chart, I don't have it with me tonight, we have a chart at the county where we show the top 10 grant recipients from the county for the last 10 years. And in every case, we always receive more money from the company than we did prior to them locating or expanding. So if you look at someone like Freightliner, we've given them something like a million dollars in tax incentives and they've paid us 12. Our largest payout to date was Buckeye, they received about $3 million and they've paid us $4.8 million. What oftentimes occurs, especially with larger projects like this and these tax grants, is what the program is structured is you'll get the grant upfront for the initial investment, but then to get the next grant from us or the city, you have to have a net increase in your tax base of a million dollars. And that sounds like, who cares, that's some esoteric stuff. It's fairly important because on a plan of $120 million on an average year, you probably have about $10 million depreciation. So if they come in year one and year two, they spend $5 million, they're not going to get a grant. Or they keep investing over time, they'll have to hit a net increase of $1 million to get an additional grant. So what that usually means is that over time, there's investments that they'll make that'll be non-incentivized within that 10-year period. That's more than you probably wanted to know, but from, if you look at Buckeye, from the initial incentive, we probably received another 30 or 40 million dollars that was non-incentivized investment that.
Okay. One other question I have is the $100,000 that Gastonia will offer, Project H, on the grant of 100,000, the electric economic development grant, is that coming from the fund balance in the electric department?
No, that's been budgeted. That will be included in the budget if that is proposed, but it will not come out of fund balance. It is contingent, it will be budgeted, and then when they are up and operational would be when that's paid, but not before them.
But it's coming from the electric fund, not from the general fund?
Correct. It will stay in the electric fund.
It comes from the electric fund. We set aside funding for economic development, but it is electric revenues for electric customers. So if they bring the load, then the electric, it is that kind of incentive. Tax dollars are not involved.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Christie.
Other questions? Christie? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to close the public hearing and approve this incentive package as presented.
Second.
I will second.
Motion and a second. Is there, is there discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you, Christie, very much. Item three is a resolution approving a planning application to the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Loan Program for the Water Treatment Plant Upgrade and Expansion Project. The presentation is by Mr. Matt Bernhardt, Director of Public Works and Utilities. Matt?
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. As you're aware, the water treatment plant renovation project is underway and is currently in the preliminary engineering phase. Pleased to report to you that, that phase and that process is going well, and a draft report is being prepared and finalized. And will be coming to you through your utilities committee in the near future. However, there is one item that is somewhat time-sensitive that needs to go ahead and come before you, and that is the consideration of approval of a resolution to the state of North Carolina for a, from their Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund Program in the amount of $300,000 for a planning loan. Due to the schedule, we would need to go ahead and ask you for consideration of that in advance of the report coming regarding the preliminary engineering phase. This is a planning loan that certainly would assist in the overall expense of the project. However, the primary purpose of the application being made is that that places us into the state's evaluation of our project. And then, our project would then be rated and placed in, onto the state's priority list for funding. And we would be able to see where we rank on that list relative to all the other projects. So the, the, while the planning loan is certainly important and the $300,000 would be helpful, we would request this for the primary reason that we need to, in order to continue the discussions with the state, to continue, pursue any funding assistance opportunities, we need to get our project rated and ranked on that list. And this is sort of the front door, so to speak, for doing that. I would stress that this doesn't bind the board permanently, as any agreement, any award that would be made regarding this would still come back in the form of an agreement to this board for consideration of approval. So this is simply to submit the application.
Questions? You make a motion, go right ahead. You got a motion, second, and under discussion.
Matt? Yes, sir. The $300,000 for this planning loan, it's going to go for a membrane, membrane pilot program. That is a likely possible way to expend those funds and is something that we're looking at. In order to gain approval for the use of membrane filtration, it's pretty much accepted that you would have to run a pilot program where you literally have a small membrane filtration unit or several small units brought in on skids, so to speak, and connected up, and you run them for a period of time to determine the optimum units and sizes and concentrations based on your water characteristics. That all still remains to be worked out and is included in the report as far as the consideration of a pilot program. That will be in the report coming to the utilities committee for review. So $300,000 that's spent on that program? Right. Is that going to be able to be implemented, you know, after the pilot's over? Can we start using it at that time? What I'm trying to say is, do we have to go back to square one and then make a, you know, build a bigger one or something? And spend X, X amount of dollars on that? Well, the benefit of the pilot program is that when you finish, the results from that can then be used as part of the design basis for the design of the plant. So it actually, in, in, in many respects, will save you time and money in the actual design of the plant processes, because you're designing specifically to results that you obtained from the pilot process, which allows you to be much more specialized, much more specific in your designs. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Yes, sir.
Has been a motion. And a second. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor, then, for vote. It's unanimous. Thank you. Item four is the Gastonia Tourism Development Authority Report. Presentation by City Manager, Mr. Munn, please, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this report is given to you from our recent meetings that the Gastonia Tourism Development Authority met in July and in August. And in August, we received a request from the Gaston County Travel and Tourism Authority to participate in a program, a six-month program, working with Tom Warner, to advertise in North and South Carolina for Gaston County travel and tourism. This was a potential collaboration between the county and the city, and also a, the authorities that are established in Belmont and Mount Holly. And our authority, the city, welcomes the collaboration opportunities to work with the county and work with the other jurisdictions to try to get activity here in Gaston County, because the more hotels that we have here, the more dollars come into our community, the more jobs that are available, the more tourism development tax that comes into all of us. And so we are all supportive of that approach. Their proposal from the county was a $78,000 ad campaign. And our proportion would be $29,679. When the Gastonia Authority reviewed it, there was a concern about accountability. If you do that for six months, how do you know what you really got at the, at the other end? And so there was not a way to calculate that the expenditure of these funds would then produce new heads, heads on beds, as people would say. Because the hotel representatives on our authority are really helpful to us. They tell us what's really going on. The revenues for our hotels are pretty strong during the week. The business travelers support our hotels. Where they're not having occupancy levels that they need are on weekends. It's also, weekends are for our, our conference center, slow time as well. So what the, the effort here was to do is to advertise and to get more travel and training on the weekends. But again, we weren't sure whether this advertising effort in six months would be able to do that. So based upon a conversation of, of our authority and the members that were there, were Jesse Cole from the Grizzlies, Nicole Bolt from Hampton, Ian, the mayor, myself, and Bill Owen from the conference center, we began to gravitate towards something where you have a contract salesperson who would be focused on just getting those weekend activities. Particularly sports programs, where you bring in sports teams that come in, or others where the parents come with them and have to spend the weekend. We would like to have that discussion with the county about a possibility as an alternate way for us to collaborate, to try to bring more heads and beds. And we're going to have a meeting next week with the county, some of the, the county folks and the city, and we're going to try to keep that communication going on. But we're having a discussion right now, and wanted to report that to the council, about the ways in which the city and county are working together and trying to decide how best to spend the money. If you read the information that we have here in the, in the exhibit, you'll see that most of our money, the hotel occupancy money, is programmed. It's programmed for the conference center. And in fact, our, we are now more than $700,000 of funds available. But if you look at the pro forma that's attached, about 14 years from now, we'll start to be in a negative position. Now, there's a lot of assumptions that go into pro formas that go out that long. But one of the things that really will make a difference is if we can bring more hotels and we can bring more economic development, then those numbers take care of themselves for the long term. And so that's really what we would like to try to do. But we really can't devote much money of our hotel occupancy tax away from the, the obligation, the bond obligations that we have at the conference center. But this is a small amount of money. It is $29,000, and we're just having that debate and discussion now. So if the council has any input, I'd like to have that and report that back to the authority. Thank you.
Mr. Munn, when I first read this report, the comments that are listed there and the suggestions are interesting. But the one thing that caught my eye is that the suggested part of the video that would feature Gastonia, we obviously have the shield, which is certainly a draw to the area. But then we have a state park, a local restaurant, and a former politician. I don't see how that is portraying the best of Gastonia when, like you said, we've got the conference center. Why would that not be featured? You know, maybe the current mayor in a current commercial. I, I just don't know that a lot of thought was put into what would be included from Gastonia. I, I found this selection to be a little odd in lacking on what would promote the best face of Gastonia.
Yeah.
As far as bringing tourists in, I'm not saying any of these things, there's anything wrong with these things. I just don't see the things that are listed as bringing tourists into Gastonia.
I think this was some of the, the concerns that the, the authority, the Gastonia Authority had with it. If the, the idea that we would have would be that if we participated at all in that effort, we wanted to have the kind of facilities that you were talking about and updated information so that that would be current. But that was really where the, the start of the conversation began. But by the time we got into it, we said, well, really, I'm not sure how we could account for what we did. And that's where they were talking about a contract employee who would be tasked to bring in certain venues into our community on weekends. And, and will that raise occupancy rates? And see what that does over a nine-month period or something like that. Dr. Perle?
Mr. Munn, with regard to this percentage, this 38 to 40 percent, how is that determined?
Uh, the, the, the proportion of, of facilities are, are, are funding, basically. The county gets 3% for hotels wherever they are, whether they're in Mount Holly or Belmont or Gastonia. Most of them are in Gastonia. Then there is a small percentage, there, there's one in Mount Holly and one in, or a couple in, in Belmont. And then we, our, our percentage is the, the amount of money that we receive for our 3%. So it's based upon the percentages of, of dollars of hotel occupancy money.
So the county gets Gastonia hotel money? And then they wanted us to contribute additional Gastonia hotel money just by saying that we were going to get a, a piece of the commercial, so to speak?
That's correct. And they were making that request to Belmont and Mount Holly as well. And really, if you think about it, all the hotels are in the cities anyway. I mean, they're not out in the rural areas, I mean, so.
My, my concern, which may have been also part of your discussions, is that, that's a, a very transient effort, because you're talking about a six-month period of time, and then what happens, you know? And anyone who understands marketing and advertising knows that it has to be a repetitive process, an ongoing process, a process that does not discontinue at a point in time certain in the future. Otherwise, you only have that message for a short period of time, and then that message goes away. So I, I don't see that as a sustainable program. So the alternative that you mentioned, I think, is certainly more worthy of discussion, where you would have a contract person, or you'd have someone, you know, who'd be specifically out there, you know, recruiting these types of venues or these types of programs. And then the question to that would be, is, do we really have the facilities to actually market to those types of venues? Because I know the county in the past has discussed, you know, multi-field facilities for larger types of tournaments and things like that. So my question, before you would go to the trouble of, you know, actually hiring someone to do this, do we have something to sell in terms of those kinds of tournaments? Do we have enough of those types of facilities to sell for that type of, you know, business? Before, before even go in that direction?
And that, that's a great question. One of the people that sits on the county's board is Chuck Dellinger, who is, he sits on the county travel and tourism board. And he would have the very specific information about, about, particularly about tournaments. And in, in Gastonia, we are positioned not in the, maybe the upper tier of the amount of fields that are available, but certainly compared to where we were 20 years ago with the development of Poston, the development of Martha Rivers. We, we are competitive and do have tournaments to some degree. So the Stanley actually just opened up some new fields, and they had a very successful tournament. They really only have two fields. You are limited by the number of fields you have. But what we have done in Gastonia, we have actually done cooperative ventures with the county and with other jurisdictions, where we have our fields and their fields, and we can put together a larger tournament. And so I think we have some opportunity, and we can try to define that better, and need to define that better when you're trying to sell something. So if it's a very large tournament, we might not be there, but we may be able to get to some mid-sized tournaments.
Greg?
To just kind of add on to that, the, the schools have all these fields also that are underutilized, okay? So maybe it becomes, maybe a, a, a bigger partnership, because we've got all these schools in the area. And I know some of the schools right now are using, some of the, um, younger football teams are using the football fields in the high schools. So that might be an option that we could investigate.
Absolutely.
Mr. Kemp?
And I think this is our first foray into doing any kind of advertising since we've been on the board here, since we've been elected. I mean, $78,000 is not a lot. I understand that, Councilman Curling, but it's a start. And we got to start somewhere. The one thing I like, you know, we could change the video around, that's easy to do. But I do like the idea of having a video. Now, is this going to be on Time Warner channels, or it's going to be like a regular commercial out there? Can we put it on our website?
They would have it on website. They would have 24/7 visit Gaston video on their travel-on-demand for Greensboro, Raleigh, Wilmington, and some South Carolina areas. Notice not Charlotte, because again, you're trying to get to people. See, what we're all trying to do is get people to come on a weekend and stay a day or two. Because, you know, if we're going to watch our children or grandchildren at an event, and it's in Charlotte, most of us will drive. We'll drive over and drive back. But if you can get it a little further out there, then you'll spend the evening. And then when you spend the evening, you go to restaurants, and you'll be able to, you know, partake of the, the opportunities that we're really looking for.
Would we be able to put that video on our website? So if a visitor comes to our website, they can click it on and see what Gastonia has to offer?
I would think, I would think so, but I don't know. I don't know.
Mr. Kemp, then Dr. Perle?
Thank you. I think also, to go to your comment, Councilman Pearsall, it's also a question of focus. And with the prospective representative that would be looking to bring business to our city, one of the things that was discussed with our hotel partners was to identify not only activities, but activities, as you said, Mr. Munn, that would, to some degree, number one, necessitate folks staying in our hotels, but also that they would be return business. And, and not just a one-shot deal, and we never see that organization again, but one that they could. they could hopefully find a home here in Gastonia. We treat them well, and they come back year after year. And then we can grow that activity, whichever, whatever that activity may be, on a continuum. Thank you.
You know, I'd really, I'd really like to know what Gaston County Travel and Tourism is doing, because this is obviously, you know, maybe a piece of it. But I'd really be curious to know what is their overall marketing plan for the county? Because, you know, we're looking at this sort of in a vacuum. All of a sudden, we've been asked to, you know, kind of pitch in here, but, you know, what are they doing with these dollars? I'd love to see them, before any final decision is made, to give a presentation to us and show us, you know, a full marketing plan that they do, you know, for the county and how much does the city have already involved in that. It seems to me like if you're going to do, you know, a great job with marketing with this, you have to have, you know, all the typical parts of marketing involved, you need to have, you know, shoes on the ground. So a recruiter-type of person for what we're talking about would be appropriate. You would want to have a strong website presence, whether it be, you know, at the county level or at the individual city levels. You know, you wanted to have, you know, advertising through television. You want to have magazine advertising. You want to have all those things. I don't really know what they do right now, so I'm not so sure, you know, where this fits in. And again, I'll go back to that concept of sustainability. What is their, you know, what is their marketing budget right now? Where does this fit into it? What should this be long-term? It sounds like we probably should be doing more than what we're doing, but I really don't know what they're doing. So it's kind of hard to really say what the best thing is to do at the moment.
I think we can get that information from them, and I think they would be probably happy to come to our council meeting or, and give us that information. You know, primarily, their offices are located over in Belmont at the travel and tourism offices at the, at the Welcome Center. And they have been involved with a variety of activities over the years. And funding is competitive, and they will entertain funding for various things throughout the county and have been involved with various things over the years. But they, Mr. Israel could probably speak to that much better, and we could perhaps invite him to a meeting.
Ed, one way marketing is successful is by measuring. And you were saying, how do you measure? Well, with the hotels, during that six-month period, wouldn't they know what they had in the past? Like last year, the month of October, November, December, how many people had come and stayed? And since we start running the ads and the promos and stuff, and then we can measure, measure it that way. That's the only way I could really, you know, you're thinking about heads and beds. I think that'd probably be the best way.
I believe I'm correct, based on, Dr., I believe I picked up on this, and what Dr. Curlin's comment about the, what they're doing. Is Nicole Bolt, is she not, is she's on both boards?
Yes, yes, correct.
I thought I remembered that.
Yes.
She's the lady at Hampton Inn.
That's correct.
That's on our, that's on this committee and also on the Walmsley Committee. Okay. Brenda?
I might be mistaken, but haven't we done some advertising with the Travel and Tourism Board in the past? A couple of years ago, didn't we help fund something?
I think many years, as I recall, many years ago, we did. I think there have been various collaborations. Again, I remember some of the tournaments and things like that, and brochures, we may have, and things like that, we've done. Small, small projects.
I just, I'm not, I mean, you know, I just remember something about that, and it goes back to what did we get for that investment? I mean, it was a dollar amount. And how do we measure what we're able to get in return for that investment? If there is a dedicated person that is out there recruiting day in and day out, then you can measure that to a degree, okay? You can actually say, all right, I booked this for this weekend. I booked this for this weekend. So there's a little, it's a little bit easier to measure that way than just putting dollars into the advertising. Not that I'm against advertising, but I think that we're in a position to where we can look and see, we need to invest in what we can measure. Where can we get the most for the dollars that we're getting ready to invest?
Yes, sir.
Just one last comment. I think that it's a good idea to promote our area, especially our city, and certain things that we have. But I think the comments made here tonight have been very good. We do need to know how to measure it. And I think we need a more focused message that we're sending out, not just about the city, but as the area as a whole. It's been mentioned several times, like the ball tournaments and so forth. And Mr. Munn, you mentioned Stanley. And I actually have a good friend that lives in Southport, North Carolina, and her and a friend brought her two sons, who played in that tournament in Stanley. Southport did rather well in that tournament in Stanley, but they ended up staying three nights because her son's team kept winning. They actually stayed in a hotel in Gastonia, they ate in the restaurants in Gastonia, and she actually got up every morning and went jogging at Rankin Lake Park. So, you know, that, just the one instance. So if ball tournaments are where we're getting a lot of tourism in, then, you know, let's kind of define our focus a little better and not just say, you know, we have a restaurant here and this, let's define the target audience that we're going for and have a way to measure the results. But, you know, overall, I'm for the idea, I just think we need to define it a little better.
Is that, what's the will of the council? Anyone like to?
Do we have to make a decision, or?
This was a request. Mr. Mayor, the Tourism Development Authority board legally is the entity that makes these decisions. This is in the form of a report for your information, and certainly, I think the board members, which include the mayor and Mr. Munn, are going to take your advice back and mull it over, but no formal motion is required.
Good answer. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Ed. Item five is the Central City Revitalization and Housing Committee report presentation by Chairman, Councilman Todd Pierceall. Now, since we already have approved the agenda, I need a motion, we need a motion to add item five A and five B, Councilman Campbell. Is there a motion to add that?
I make the motion, Your Honor.
Is there a second? All right.
Just one clarification from the city clerk. Since we already have a five, would the existing report be five A? And if we're adding two items, it would be five D and C? Is that correct? A and B? Just leave it as A and B? Okay, we're good.
Okay. Go forward.
Do we need to vote? To add them?
No, we could.
We had a motion in a second.
All in favor of adding this motion, adding the two? Thank you.
I'll start with the Central City Revitalization and Housing Committee report, and then I will refer to Councilman Kimball for item A and B that have been added. Just in the consideration of time here, we've got five items that the Central City Revitalization and Housing Committee went over. Only one of them's going to require a vote of the council, so I'll give you a brief synopsis of the others. Item one was a housing authority report, and what we got was a status of efforts to rehabilitate Cameron Court and Weldon Heights. And they've been holding public hearings on that information. You also have in your packet information on the Rental Assistance Demonstration, or RAD, program. Our Public Housing Authority is working with HUD on some different options they have on upgrading the public housing that we have in two different housing projects. So if you want to read about those RAD programs, they are contained in your agenda. Item number two was a request to terminate the Memorandum of Understanding with ALS Development of NCLLC. And some of you may remember, a couple weeks back, we approved that. A lot has transpired with that. Mr. Joe Grant, who was the original requister of the MOU, requested that the committee consider terminating the current MOU with ALS Development of NCLLC. This MOU describes general steps to consider new assisted rental housing on the property of the existing Beaverbrook Apartments. Mr. Grant came to our last meeting and apologized to the city for what he felt was a misrepresentation of ownership by ALS of the property, specifically an outstanding loan remaining on the property and currently in bank default. The committee did vote 3-0 to recommend terminating the existing MOU. Since the MOU was approved, Mr. Grant and ALS Development have parted ways in their business agreement. Mr. Grant felt that since he requested the original MOU, that he would like us to go ahead and terminate that MOU. But since then, we have received correspondence from Mr. Jerry Meigs, who represents ALS Development. He cannot be at the meeting tonight, so he has asked, and we are going to move this item to the October 1st meeting, where he can present his information before the full council votes on that. So that, for right now, is information only, and that will reappear at the October 1st meeting. Item number three was the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, or NSP, audit report and additional funding. Ms. Myra Messer of the city staff gave us a report. One item was a recent monitoring visit by the NCDOC Community Development Housing Division, and it concluded that the NSP funding for the Armstrong Apartments, Carriage House, and the Gaston Memorial Apartments to be in general compliance with federal and state CDBG guidelines. Also, the city has received verbal confirmation of being awarded $550,000 in de-obligated NSP 1 grant funds. And the city has applied for these funds, and as it said, we do have verbal confirmation that we will be awarded those. And these funds would be used to build five or six houses in the Gray Street Beatrice Costner project area, which already have environmental approval in place. And the homes would need to be constructed by March of 2014 to be eligible for those funds. This will come before council for a actual formal vote, once those grant funds are received. So it's just for informational purposes only now. Item four is the Habitat Housing. And obviously, on September 15th, Habitat for Humanity celebrated construction of its 100th house. I don't know if any council members were there. I was out of town on business, but certainly a great milestone for Habitat. And then I believe the 101th house is actually being built in a combined effort with the city police, city fire department, and either the sheriff or county fire department. Is that correct? So not only a great milestone on the 100th house, but the 101st house is going to be built by our law enforcement and fire department. So we certainly want to thank you guys for that. Item five is actually where we will need to vote, so we'll get on to that. Wells Fargo Bank...
Wait, I'd like to recuse myself, if that's okay?
I don't know that, that anybody will mind that you recuse yourself, but, Mr. Smith, I don't think it's necessary, is it?
It is not legally required that Mr. Gallagher excuse himself just because he's employed by Wells Fargo, because what's happening is Wells Fargo is donating property here to the city, and there won't be any financial gain to Councilman Gallagher as a result of that.
So they're providing the dream, not taking it away?
Correct. That's why I said, certainly, certainly if you want to be excused, I don't think anybody would object, but I think you're all right and probably would want to be part of this vote. Wells Fargo Bank has approached the city concerning donation to the city of two foreclosed houses in the Firestone Mill community, and those houses are 319 and 326 South Vance Street. Staff has evaluated these houses and recommends acceptance based on a likewise donation by the city to Preservation North Carolina. And you'll see to the right that the committee voted unanimously, three to zero, to recommend acceptance of the donation from Wells Fargo, and in turn, the city will donate the homes to Preservation North Carolina, contingent upon the understanding that Wells Fargo will pay all taxes due prior to the city acquiring the property, and that a condition of donation to PNC will include a requirement that the houses be maintained in accordance with all local ordinances. And the discussion there was, certainly the city doesn't want to take a donation that there's liens or taxes owed on, so if Wells Fargo has everything in order on the property, we'll take them as a donation. Obviously, what is the city going to do with houses? So then we will turn around, and they are in the Firestone Mill, and Preservation North Carolina was so active in getting Loray Mill renovated, we would donate those to Preservation North Carolina. They would in turn try to rehabilitate those properties and sell them. But our concern was that Preservation North Carolina sometimes does not have the money to upkeep properties that they take in, and we did not want to see these two homes deteriorate any further or become an eyesore or an additional problem to that neighborhood. So we would be donating those to Preservation North Carolina, again, with the requirement that the houses be maintained in accordance with all local ordinances. And I would like to present that in the form of a motion to the council that we approve acquiring these from Wells Fargo and donating them to Preservation North Carolina with the stipulations printed in your agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll have a second, sir.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
Has there been a conversation with PNC concerning this issue?
Yes.
Okay, and they're on board?
Yes.
Great.
Any other discussion?
What about Habitat for Humanity? Would they take them?
I don't think that Habitat would. Myra, you can probably, even though you're not going to speak for Habitat, Habitat has mentioned previously that sometimes renovations exceed the scope of their budget. It's actually cheaper to build a new home than renovate.
Habitat does have a program now that they renovate, but not in this particular area. You know, they're focusing right now on Prior Street. But Preservation North Carolina would, it's very interested on Vance Street. We did a house with them probably five years ago.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ma.
Okay. All in favor of the motion? Thank you.
And that concludes the Central City Revitalization and Housing Report, ma'am.
Okay, you want to go ahead, Mr. Campbell, with five A, under the...
Thank you, Your Honor. I was, received the communication, verbal communication, from our Representative Baumgartner over the weekend regarding the addition of another lane onto I-85. He requested discussion and hopefully, a resolution of support for that undertaking for Interstate 85 from Belmont through Bessemer City. Ed, I believe you have a specific endpoint on that?
I think what, what the city would want to do is have that widening go all the way to the intersection of 74, because one of the things that we see in Belmont now is we see where those lanes come down, you get this pinch, and it backs up. You really want to move the traffic all the way through Gastonia, because if you go to just say, Bessemer City Road or something like that, that could begin to have the back, the same backup that is occurring in Belmont, just occur a little bit further down. And so I think we would want to get that all the way around the city.
Thank you, Ed. Overall, Representative Baumgartner feels that at this juncture, there are monies available through a variety of sources that may make this a reality. And also included within this project would be something we voted on a couple meetings ago, which would be the modification or addition of an additional exit ramp from I-85 north to Cox Road within this package. So at this juncture, I'd be asking, number one, for any type of discussion, and hopefully, we could draft some type of a resolution supporting this project.
What is the cost?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, I thought I was asking the manager a question, okay? Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
I'd like to know what the cost would be for adding the lane and also for the Cox Road exit. I'm not familiar with that, but...
We don't have a total cost at this time, and in fact, the costs would be divided up between a number of entities, be it state and federal, under a number of grant programs that are still being undertaken. The gauge right now that I think that he's looking for is of support to go further with the project, or we don't support the fourth lane, I think is pretty much, pretty much what we're... I think it's pretty much where we are.
So what you're looking for from tonight's discussion is just a resolution in support of widening I-85 from...
Through Gastonia.
Point A to point B.
That's correct.
So that then that can be...
Take it to the next level.
Communicated and given to our representatives in Raleigh as they lobby for the funds.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any concerns about any of that? Questions?
I just, why not? I mean, that's certainly what I think everybody understands to be a need for the county to move traffic through our county in a timely fashion side. I don't think there's, I mean, especially when there's really no price tag established or any local match required at this point, this is a resolution of support. Let's keep it simple, folks, okay? Let's just, you know, support this to include the additional lane at Cox Road as an exit lane at this time. Sure.
I think it's very important that if our state representatives feel that there's money available, that we definitely tell them that we support it. I mean, we have two projects up and coming, not only the Cox Road on-ramp expansion or addition, but, you know, our city staff is working diligently with the state right now on the 321 exit and on-ramp. And if you widen 85, that's certainly going to throw a hiccup in that. So if there's funds to do it, let's do it all and get it done and get it done right. So I certainly think that it's warranted that we send them something, letting them know we support it, and also...
Is there a motion to that effect?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I was just going to finish up that Councilman Curlin and myself serve as representatives to the MPO, and there has actually been discussion on widening 85 and, you know, what the wishes of the different municipalities are. So I have a feeling we'll be hearing about this more in the future, and certainly, if there's a resolution out there saying Gastonia supports it, we can bring it forward. It is an issue that we feel is important, that the MPO should pursue as well.
Well, with this vote, and John, if you want to take over...
Go ahead.
Just with this vote, then we would be directing the staff to craft a resolution and then bring it forth at our next council meeting for approval? Is that soon enough, Councilman?
I'm not sure about that. Dave and Todd, I believe Representative Baumgartner is going to be going forward at your next MPO meeting, if in fact you are going to be hearing from, I believe, representatives and the public at that time. However, I do believe that if we vote for the resolution, and it is not specifically drafted at that time, he would be able to move forward and say that there is one in the works. So I would expect that your next meeting, he will be there discussing that, as well as some other municipalities.
Okay. Are you ready? All in favor? Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Under the second item, I just wanted to bring to the attention concern that I've spoken with a number of constituents on, and I've investigated personally, and that is the clothing donation containers that we tend to see around the seat. Frankly, there are some there that, in very, very small letters, indicate that they are for profit. And I know a number of folks were surprised that, in fact, they were donating clothing that they thought might be used within the city of Gastonia or Gaston County, and they were not only going out of the area, but actually were going out of the country and for profit. Additionally, I did contact one of the companies that do have some that are supposedly for the good and for charity. And in fact, the majority of their donations go out of the country, and I was actually surprised to see that one of the countries, in fact, has been on the radar screen as supporting terrorism against the United States. I did contact them, and I requested what would we, or what would the city have to do, or some of the other entities have to do, to go and get some of these donations to stay within either Gastonia or the city of Gaston County? And they said that they would entertain that. So I would request that staff be able, we would be able to do something in the form of a modification of an ordinance, that it would be clearer, number one, that the containers that are for profit for a particular enterprise be in big letters, so you know that you're actually giving away to a for-profit agency. And secondly, that we are going to try and move forward with the ones that are of a charitable donation factor, that they would be able to give some of that clothing back to our citizens in the city and the county. It's all, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay. Moving along now, if we may, to next is item six, nomination to the Electric Cities Board of Directors. Let me throw out a few things. Jack Neal, the chairman of the power agency number one, Board of Commissioners, sent these materials out, and I have, of course, mine here, on September the 10th. Presently, there are two vacancies opening up on the Electric Cities Board of Directors on December 31st. One seat is what is referred to as a majority vote seat, and the other seat is referred to as a weighted seat. A weighted seat refers to the percentage of debt that each city and power agency number one is responsible for. Our former mayor, Jenny Stoltz, has served in the weighted vote seat for six years and is not eligible for reelection. Nominations to the Electric Cities Board are made by power agency commissioners. At the beginning of our term, the city council appointed Councilman McAtier as Gastonia's Commissioner to Power Agency Number One, and Councilman Gallagher as the first alternate. The materials that we received from Mr. Neal, if that's the same Jack Neal, he's been there...
Forever.
He's been there with me, I mean, back in the 70s. He might be up there with Reverend Owens, I don't know. The materials that we received from Mr. Neal states that mayors, managers, and council members are urged to make their desires known to the commissioners or alternate commissioners, as the case may be, with respect to nominees. Commissioners and alternate commissioners are urged to seek the guidance of their mayors, managers, and council members in making nominations. The nomination form must be received by Electric Cities by October the 15th. The election of the two directors, which are voted on by the power agency commissioners, will take place on November the 19th. The city attorney is available to answer any questions the council may have about the procedures that apply here. And of course, with that now, I'll open it up to the council for discussion, or is there a member of the council who wishes to provide guidance as to whose name should be submitted on the nomination form? That's where we are now. Let's have a discussion. Any comments?
I'd like to say that the delegate wishes to attend every meeting. I feel Mr. Kuzak learned a lot. It's very complicated. I spent a lot of time with that, and I enjoyed it very much. I think that then the Gallagher depends on, in fact, in one way, certainly a step extended away from the Board of Directors of Electric Cities, which would be a privilege and an honor to serve on, and I would certainly like to be considered for that.
All right. Any other comments, questions? I think that it's, going back in history, and Ed can help me with this, but, and all you can, I think that we are probably, we used to be, and I guess still are, we Gastonia were like the number two highest user.
Yes.
I believe High Point was number one.
High Point's one, which...
Yeah, High Point was, and Cullen and I worked there together at that time. Okay. Is there a motion that the city council recommends someone to be nominated by the Gastonia's Power Agency Commissioner for the weighted director seat on the Electric Cities Board that is available January 1st?
Mayor, it's my understanding we can send more than one recommendation. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I will nominate Councilman McAtier.
Okay.
I will second that.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I'll nominate Councilman Gallagher.
I'll second that.
Council, what we do now? You know, this is a little different than what we're using.
Unless there are any more nominations, you can take them in alphabetical order, and if each one gets four votes, then that is a recommendation to your power agency commissioner to fill out a nomination form with that person's name.
Okay, are there any other names, or any other...
Any way else?
Motion? We have, we have Mr. Gallagher and Mr. McAtier, according to what the council says on the alphabetical order that we use. Yes, sir.
I think just for true transparency, because I would really like to hear from both these gentlemen, you know, because I'd like to support them both, you know, hear a little bit more about, you know, number one, why they want to do this? Number two, what their past experience has been with this agency? Number three, why they think they might be personally qualified, either through their prior experience, you know, as a public official, or education, or business experience, you know? Because this is a really important position.
It is.
It's extremely important, and I think we need to make a good choice, or make two good choices, you know? Of course, if we make two good choices, then we are leaving the choice to someone else. So that you must be aware of, you know? So, but I'd love to hear from both you guys, because I'm not so sure I really, you know, have a strong favorite.
Mr. Gallagher.
Dave?
We're here. He mentioned it, he can do it again.
I offer new blood, a fresh set of new ideas, a creative way of thinking. I have a financial background in business. I don't, you know, I wasn't in a classroom. I have real-world experience. I had no accounting. About five years ago, just for fun, I went back to Gaston College and took Accounting I, Accounting II, Accounting III, and Accounting IV, just so I could just feel, you know, for giggles.
That was fun.
It was, you know? Very good teachers up there. The other thing is, I understand balance sheets and municipal bonds, just from the position I'm in with brokerage. Electric Cities debt is now approaching a payoff point of the nuclear power stations. This is a time when understanding financial matters is most crucial for this firm, not firm, but for Electric Cities itself and all the cities involved. As an alternate, I have attended both City, Electric Cities conventions, just to get more detailed knowledge on the workings of Electric Cities. And every time I'm at those meetings, and Paul could attest to it, I ask questions all the time, throughout the meetings themselves, similar to what I do here. I ask questions just to understand, even if everyone else knows what's going on, I ask questions so I can understand it. The reason I want to be on the Board of Directors there is because I feel that I would be looking out for the interest of the citizens of Gastonia. I would like Electric Cities commissioners to know that I would be the best candidate and best worker for the whole town. I would come back and report daily, not daily, but, you know, when they do meet. They meet once a month up in Raleigh. The nice thing about that is, my area is in Raleigh for my work, and I go there frequently. So this would coincide with that easily. And I do have the time available for it. I do know that they're there Thursday night and Fridays, once a month. So for me, it would be really easy to do. I have 30 days of paid time off, so I'd take off that Friday without any problems or hindrances to my job currently, and I could devote it fully to Electric Cities. And I thank you for that.
Mr. McAtier?
Well, I have an engineering background, technical background. I think that helps me a lot, and I have been attending all the meetings in Charlotte. I've learned a lot. I don't ask a lot of questions, very complicated. Ask Mr. Kuzak questions, but I don't want to make a fool out of myself because it's so complicated. But I've learned a lot, and I think over a period of time, I would be able to ask more questions. A logical step after you've been on the North Carolina Power Agency Number One is to move up to the Board of Directors. I think it'd be a great honor and a privilege to do that, and of course, I think I would be an excellent representative for the city. I've served as a candidate commissioner 16 years, have been chairman, and also was chairman of the courthouse location and the social services location, and the site selection committees. I showed leadership there during the year that I was chairman of the candidate commissioners. We passed the bond referendum for the courthouse. That hadn't been done, it'd been tried four or five times, and we passed at that time. I think our leadership, my leadership there helped with other commissioners and other people that really worked hard on that project. I've done a lot in the community. I've been mayor of Gastonia and attended Electric Cities meetings, and also I did not go to the Electric Cities conventions at Myrtle Beach and Grove Park, because I just felt like that it wasn't necessary if Mr. Kuzak was going to be there representing us as an alternate. He's an alternate commissioner also, and I didn't want to spend the city's money. Now, if you're on the Board of Directors, they pay for your plate, you know, you go to Myrtle Beach or wherever you go, they pay that amount and your costs and expenses to go there. So I just didn't want to spend the city's money, and it wasn't really necessary for me to go with the city, or to well represent Mr. Kuzak. It's kind of a vacation to go on those sort of things, anyway. So I certainly would be honored to do that, and I certainly would report back to the council. And our present member there hasn't reported to us, and I remember not since I've been on the board, but I would fairly enjoy doing it. I thought I was going to have the opportunity to do that when I first came, the delegate was hoping I could do that. So I'd appreciate any consideration you could give me, and I have lots of times, I'm retired, don't have any obligations, I can go to all the meetings, and not just have meetings on Fridays, once a month. You also have other meetings, special meetings, so you have to be available to go to those too. And I certainly can do that, and would enjoy doing that. It's gonna be a lot of fun, it'd be a privilege and an honor to serve, and I'd appreciate any consideration y'all would give me.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you both, gentlemen. Yes, sir.
Ash, can you give a little more explanation? We have one that's a weighted vote, or there's two positions open. There's a weighted vote and a majority vote.
Correct.
Will you explain the difference?
Sure.
So everybody knows what we're talking about.
Sure, sure. The weighted vote seat, which Ms. Stoltz is coming out of, is, means that each city has a vote proportional to the amount of debt that they owe on the nuclear power plant. So Gastonia's weighted vote is about a little over 17%. So if you get the four largest cities to vote for whoever the nomination is, the four large, the commissioners from the four largest cities, when they vote for the weighted seat, those four cities would come to 59%, and that person would get that seat. The majority seat, there are 19 municipalities in Power Agency Number One, and so the majority vote seat, whoever gets the highest number of votes out of that 19 becomes the person. I believe there's a lady from Granite Falls coming off of the Electric Cities Board. So that is how those two seats work. You can nominate someone for both seats, the same person for both seats. You can nominate multiple persons for both seats. Again, it's the commissioner who does the nominations. He has to sign the form, and it is the power agency commissioners who vote on November 19th to fill both of these seats.
Any questions?
Yeah, I already knew that. I just didn't know if everybody else looking and watching understood what we were deciding.
Yeah, and then Electric Cities is composed of about 14 members... Yeah, and Electric Cities is composed of about 14 members. Six of them are from Power Agency Number One cities, and six of them are from the Eastern Power Agency, and then two seats are non-Power Agency cities, normally Concord and Fayetteville, I think.
I just want to throw something out here, okay? And that is that there's no guarantee that either the gentlemen that want this position are going to get it.
Correct.
So, and I'm thinking about Gastonia, and nothing personal to either you gentlemen, but I think when we look at this, if there's any strategy that can be, you know, determined as to make Gastonia win in this, we need to put our heads together and use that. So, and I have not gone to these meetings. I've not sit in these meetings. I don't know how the machinations of this particular bureaucracy works, you know, but I do know that Gastonia needs this position badly. And so if anybody can enlighten us or me as to whether or not we should nominate two people, or does, for instance, if both these nominations go forward in both positions, is it fair to say that our current, you know, commissioner is our chief lobbyist, meaning, you know, ex-mayor Stoltz is truly the chief lobbyist, and she will choose, you know, her, you know, means by which to lobby for one of these two candidates? Or, you know, I want to, you know, I want to use the right judgment here to move Gastonia forward into that seat, you know? I certainly want the best person here to do that, too, but, you know...
The weighted average would be the way to go, Dave. That's if you want, that's the way to get somebody in there.
Yeah, because it requires less votes.
Yeah, requires less votes, and we're the number two.
Right.
High points, number one.
Right, right. So it requires less votes.
Right.
So I'm just throwing this out to keep the discussion open and get any other ideas out on the table.
Oh, that's...
If somebody...
Somebody move around.
Yeah, there you go.
We were too still, so...
Oh.
I've never heard that happen.
Thank you, Flip.
I guess we are.
Yes, sir. His hand up.
The lights going out on Electric Cities discussion isn't a good sign.
No, no, no.
Ash, clarify this for me. There's one weighted seat, one majority seat. Can we nominate, and we've got two people that would like the seat. We'd prefer one of ours to be in the weighted seat. But is there anything that says we cannot recommend, and then our commissioner, who is Mr. McAtier, can nominate both names for the weighted seat and both names for the majority seat?
As I understand...
In that way, we have a chance that if one of our representatives gets the majority seat, then obviously they're not going to be considered for the, I mean, for the weighted seat, obviously they're not going to be considered for the majority seat, but we'd have a chance at both seats?
As I understand the materials, the commissioner can nominate as many names for both seats as he wants to. That's number one.
Does he have to do those at one time, or is it going to be where he nominates somebody for the weighted seat, they vote, and then you do nominations for the majority seat?
There's a deadline.
The nominations have to be in by November 15th. I asked David Barnes, the general legal counsel for Electric Cities, yesterday, do they vote first on the weighted seat and then vote on the majority seat? And he said, "I don't know. I'm going to have to check with the clerk to the board, because this is my first year." But I think that they vote for the weighted seat first. But traditionally, Gastonia's representative has been in the weighted seat, and I don't really know a lot about, I can't really do a lot of speculating as to what the machinations are, who's lobbying for what. But, you know, the chances of Gastonia getting more than one seat are not very good. I mean, you know, if you get one of them, you won't get the other seat.
But we can try.
You can try. You can send multiple nominations for both seats.
Let me answer, also, if I may, and then call the gentleman. On Jack Neal's letter of September the 10th, it does say, Todd, to answer your question, a candidate may be nominated in both categories, but then also, as Ash said, that the nominations close in a new in Electric Cities' office by 5:00 on October the 15th. The election is actually November 19th and 20th. Dr. Curly, Mr. McAtier?
Just one other question. If you've got two nominations from the same city for the same position, could that split the vote and neither of those individuals get elected?
Yes, sir.
So I got to say, that's kind of a dangerous...
I agree.
...strategy.
I don't know that it's any more dangerous than sending one and they not get elected at all.
Well, probably, based on past experience, that it won't hurt to be the second-largest usual. We need to be at that table. Someone needs to be at that table, and you said it. So we're the second-largest, and then you said it, I believe, about the debt going. That's important, too. Yes, sir. Porter?
Yeah, I might want to say that Ken and all these men, I made a lot of friends. I think I've looked them favorably most. I think I would have the best chance of receiving their votes. I've always talked to some folks about Electric Cities' Board of Directors and had favorable comments back to me, so... But I've gotten to know all of them, and I think that goes a long ways with getting their support. I think Gastonia's got a real good chance of getting a seat with me. And I might say that next year, there'll be two more. Mr. Gallagher would be willing to wait one year, that we can have one this year and he could go next year. But I think really, as the delegate, already going to all these meetings and knowing all these folks, would put me in a better position to win in that seat for Gastonia. I do.
Dave, I've met the gentleman myself as well. I played golf with him. They told me to take up a different sport. They said tennis would probably be better for me. But I got to know the commissioners as well as Porter has. They know me. I'm not one that's going to not sit through a meeting and not say anything. I'm definitely going to be asking the questions that need to be asked in order for us to have a seat at the table. I'm going to be a person that's going to come with new ideas, new blood, new type of ways of thinking. Electric Cities is going to need that in the coming years, especially with this debt coming off. They're going to need to know what they have to do next. Do they need to find another power agency? Do other type of power? I mean, they're going, these are things that are going to be questions that need to be answered, and it's a challenge, and I'm looking forward to the challenge myself.
Okay, if there are no other questions, comments, we'll, as Mr. Smith says, we'll vote in alphabetical order, and as has been brought up, it can be one, it can be two. I think that would be dangerous, as you said, whoever. Okay, folks, in alphabetical order, the, we have two names, two recommendations, nominations, is Mr. Gallagher and all in favor of Mr. Gallagher being nominated by the Power Agency for the weighted director seat on the Electric Cities Board that's available January 1st. Raise your hand, please. Okay, we have Ms. Craig and Mr. Pierceall, Mr. Gallagher, Dr. Curly, okay? I was going to write those down. Okay, so that's four votes, and then those four, next, the other one is Mr. McAtier. Raise your hand, please. Three? Four to three. No, you did, he voted twice, and he can do that.
He can.
Because he nominated both of them.
Yes.
Okay, correct.
And I just wanted to clarify that Mr. McAtier is the...
I told you, this is different than what we're using.
It's very complicated. Mr. McAtier is the commissioner, and Mr. McAtier must complete the form and submit the name.
Okay. All right, the nominee is Mr. Gallagher with the number of votes. The, and of course, I have to ask Mr. McAtier, as our present Power Agency Commissioner, certainly you would be willing to sign the forms. I looked at one, it says, I guess it's in our package here, but this is the original letter, but it said that the Power Agency Director, you would have to fill it out, in this case, for Mr. Gallagher inside. Okay, am I on target, counsel?
I think so. Yes, sir.
Okay, well, that's item six. Item seven, City Attorney's Report, speaking of which.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of announcements. This kind of just touches on Councilman Kimball's request earlier for the resolution that Representative Bumgardner had mentioned about the extra land on 85. I did attend the, one of the Connect, Connect Our Future workshops that Centralina did Monday, and the citizens groups there were all broken down into tables and were asked to do some planning about the future, and one of the big issues was whether or not to put the Garden Parkway, you know, on the future planning map. And I know this is a very sensitive issue a lot in our community, especially the chambers still want the Garden Parkway, but I just wanted to share with you, Councilman Kimball, since you brought this up, that none of the citizens groups during the workshop that I attended on Monday morning put the Garden Parkway on any of the transportation plans. And I just thought that that was some information that I would share with you.
Mr. Kimball?
I, we obviously did not go to the same one. I went to the afternoon session, 1:30 to 3:30, I believe, and it was broken down into two tables. And what was interesting there, both groups identified Interstate 85 as needing attention and needing additional laneage. One of our groups, one of the two, did identify the Garden Parkway specifically. The other one was, the other group was specific in a, not necessarily the Parkway, but some other route from Mecklenburg on through into Gaston County. But it wasn't identified, it was more or less another bridge crossing, is what they said, but it wasn't identified as the Parkway. So that was the...
Kind of a compromise.
That was the 1:30 to 3:30 session. So I was actually going to wear that in my report, but that was another point of scope at that meeting. Thank you.
And then, Mr. Mayor, another item, this is an item of information. The city's paralegal and our right-of-way coordinator saw the agenda item about Wells Fargo donating the two properties to the city. And I just wanted to share with you, they came to me and they said, with the right-of-way acquisition for Myrtle School Road, a lot of times you have to acquire from the property owner, and if he has a mortgage, you have to acquire from his bank. And we have a really good relationship with all of the mortgage holders, except for Wells Fargo. We've had a very difficult time with Wells Fargo, and they wanted to...
Watch that, watch that.
And they wanted to know if there is any way, as part of, you know, accepting these two houses from Wells Fargo, if we could get them to cooperate. And of course, the two branches are, you know, the people we're dealing with are out in the Midwest, and the people who are donating the two houses that are eventually going to go to Preservation with Carolina are completely different brands of Wells Fargo. But I have some information on the series of events that's happened as we've tried to acquire those easements for the Myrtle School Road widening, and I will pass that on to you and perhaps some other appropriate individuals at Wells Fargo to see if we can get some more cooperation on that end. And then finally, I won't be here at the next meeting in October, Ms. McGee will be with me. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
All right, sir. Mr. Mann, City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, just two birthdays. One today is the birthday of our Constitution, 226 years, live and well. Tomorrow is the birthday of my granddaughter, Emma, who is a resident of Gastonia. We wish her happy birthday, and that's all I have.
And how old will she be?
Twelve.
Twelve.
How about that?
I think also, someone had a birthday on Sunday?
Yes. We're not counting those anymore.
I believe that.
City Council report, Ms. Craig.
No report.
Mr. Pierceall?
No report.
Gallagher?
Yes, two, three things. One, Jandine's Family Services, that was an excellent time, black dress and the guy, the tie. I liked that, that's really good. It was a good time at the Gastonia Conference Center. Really was fun. The other thing was, I went to Homegrown for the Women's Shelter at the Farmer's Market. That was really good. That was good food. Saw Ed there, he was chowing down, so it was really nice. It was worthwhile. The other thing is, I went to the opening for the 100th House for the Habitat for Humanity, and yes, our police force and our fire department, along with the sheriff, the county sheriff, men are all pitching in to work on this. Now, I was there Sunday when they dedicated this thing, and all they had down was a slab. Well, I drove by before I came here at 5:30. They had this building up, and they had already on one side of it done roofing. I mean, all the trusses were up and everything. I mean, these guys, you do not let too much, not much grass grows under your feet there, fellows. Your teams are doing a wonderful job. They were still working when I was there, and they said they work until about 6:30, 7:00 o'clock. I'm impressed. Chief Conley said that they would be done, and Chief Welsh said, "Jim, you come by in two weeks, this place will be finished." I was surprised coming by in two days. So if you get a chance to go down Prior Street, by all means, go down there, look to your left, see what a wonderful job they are, and if you have time, you want to pitch in, Habitat for Humanity would welcome your volunteer service on any house that they have coming up. And that is my report. Thank you.
Dr. Curly?
Just a couple of things. Three people I want to acknowledge tonight. The first one is James Currents, who will be retiring this week, as you know, and I just want to publicly thank James for his many, many years of service to the city. He's been an excellent employee. You haven't always seen him, but you've seen the results of his labors. The trash has been picked up. He has been a steward of our resources in his department, and we wish him well and good health and hope that his future is bright and long and that he enjoys his retirement. The second one is Jack Kaiser, and he also retires this week after, again, more than 30 years with the city. And we all know how well Jack has contributed to the development and growth of this city in many ways and has received accolades at various levels of his profession, and so we also wish him well and hope that he enjoys his retirement, and maybe we hope to see him back in some other capacity with the city at some time in the near future. And the third one is kind of special, because that's my daughter, Hannah, who had her birthday yesterday, and she spent part of her day yesterday with Mr. Kimball and other folks at this, at this, what was the actual?
Connect.
It was the Connect Gas, Connect Consortium.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, and so Hannah was vocalizing the needs of the youth of Gastonia on her 28th birthday, so, and I wish her a happy birthday, and that's all I've got.
Thank you. Dave, she did not vocalize that it was her birthday.
I'm sure she did.
That was, it was interesting, you know, in taking part, and Ash, you, I guess, were at a different one than I was, but it was interesting when, you know, people from all over the county, but yet, when you went to put pen to paper, how many of the viewpoints were fairly the same, and many of the things that everybody found to be important ended up on the page in a lot of the same ways. Secondly, I was able to take part in the 9/11 ceremony in, both in Stanley and the one in our city, and Chief, thank you, both chiefs, thank you. And again, a wonderful retirement to Jack Kaiser, and he was actually there yesterday as well. Thank you. That's all I have, sir.
All right. Last night, we had the first meeting of the new group of the mayor's Youth Leadership Council, and it looks like there's going to be a good future there, a good year for those young people. As Councilman Gallagher said, I was going to bring up also the groundbreaking Habitat Sunday where my head was burnt. I think that we're still not really sure, though, how Chief and Chief, you know, if those guys, you know, if they're on our time or on their time, but we don't really care. And the sheriff said he would take care of that, so... You know, as I was just, as my son said, as I was perusing through my J. Crew, I was perusing... perusing through the Community Foundation of Gaston County. Here's a 2012 report, and I said, "Oh, Gaston County, born and bred Brenda Craig. Look there. Who is that holding that fish?"
That's me.
Well, I can hardly see because the fish is so big. So, and this is, this is a wonderful article. I just read it from every little, I know you remember these beach pictures and these old, I can remember those better than I can remember yesterday. But this is a wonderful-looking family, and that's two dear people that were your parents.
And I hope that it is perceived as a tribute to my parents, because I would not be who I am without my mother and father's influence.
Right. Well, let it be known that you ain't going to the prom if you don't buy your dress in Gastonia. And then, of course, you stop, and you think about Jan and this one over here in a black dress. That's scary, too, but you're pretty in a black dress. This is an excellent article, y'all, anyone that would like to see it. Lastly, who saw Ichabod last night? Did anybody see Ichabod? Anybody see Ichabod last night? I did.
I saw it there.
Well, it primarily was our front door. It said Sheriff's Department, but it boyed was at First Baptist. I mean, it was a straight shot, and it did show across the street over there, too, where you looked at. They had the green canopies and all, but, and that's about, it's a, I didn't realize that it's a ongoing, you know, whatever you call, and so there's got to be more of Gastonia in there. Anything else at all that we have missed? If not, it's 8:30, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much, and these are a motion to adjourn. Exactly. Okay. Ah. No.